Yes, I agree.
Agreed.
Thanks, guys. We're just waiting a few minutes for a few more board members to jump on.
Well, Jerz John.
We've got a quorum.
We got a quorum. Okay.
Thanks, Planning Board.
It is 6:30, and I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for October 7th, 2021. Do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
I do not.
Okay. We have the minutes from September 30th. If everybody's in favor, let's adopt them.
I'm moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Communications and announcements. We have the email from Campanza regarding the wellhead protection area delineation report. We have a mailing from the Shokan watershed stream management program invitation. And we have an email from S. Grenadier regarding a case before us on 22 Rock City Road. So, we have before us two public hearings and three sketch plan reviews. So, the first one, a public hearing, is Mark and Harriet Deswan Aaron's SUP number 21-0661. And this is a virtual public hearing for a special use permit application for construction of a new house and other projects located in the R5 and scenic overlay zoning districts at 132 Valley View Way in Woodstock. And the rep is Brad Will. Before I have Brad make his presentation, I would just like to tell the board the the site visit review that we did on this case. And the site visit was made by the zoning enforcement officer who went up there to say there is no clear cutting. And I wrote a report that goes Stuart and I did visit the site for 132 Valley Way yesterday afternoon. I found that the site located in the scenic overlay complied with the basics of the scenic overlay requirements. The buildings were not located on the outside edge of the mountain, but were set back against the rock ledges. The building's exterior are of stone so as to blend into the mountainside. There is a buffer of trees to the front of the building so as to screen them from below, and that buffer of trees is to remain. The view from the proposed building site is of a horizontal view of the mountains and does not look down on any of the valley below. The proposed buildings are clad in stone and the windows are recessed into the walls so as not to be obvious and meets the code. It seems to be a well-designed home site that blends into the mountain and is not obtrusive. There was no clear cutting, and the few trees located within the building footprint to be removed will not expose the structures to view. The selective trimming of treetops to open the view does not expose the buildings. Since this is an approved building lot in the scenic overlay, this is the most least obtrusive and most site respective design that could be done. So, before I turn it over to have Brad give his presentation, I would just like to say that we've been having quite a bit of issues in the scenic overlay. And Laura Ricky of the town board suggested to me that we have a meeting to go over the scenic overlay code. So after this meeting is over, I propose to set up a meeting with all involved parties to have a meet on the scenic overlay code. So, this is a public hearing, and after Brad gives his presentation, the public can ask questions of Brad and the board. However, we will not take any questions regarding clear cutting violations. Violations are for the ZEO. The planning board has nothing to do with violations, no enforcement power, so please don't bring violations to the planning board. That goes to the building department. So with that said, Brad, would you like to make your presentation?
Peter, just open the public hearing first.
I'm so sorry. This is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing and have a motion to do so.
Don't move.
Okay, Brad, there you go.
Thank you.
Brad, do you want any visuals?
Well, I didn't realize that I was going to be presenting again. I mean, I can, I'm happy to reread what I said the previous time, but I think Peter kind of summarized it. We did, in fact, meet on site. And it was evident that the designs presented were in harmony with the site and represented less than 1% disturbance of the overall parcel. We're in keeping with all of the regulations and stipulations described in the special use permit language in the zoning code. None of the buildings are even more than 16 feet tall from the base of the walls to the top of the parapet. The roofs, as we know and as was presented back in August, are flat roofs. They, so they are, there's no pitched roofing material evident either on site up close or from a distance. They are set, the, all the buildings that form the single-family residence and the guest quarters are set back on this kind of plateau area that extends from the foot of the ridge, the rock ridge, and out. So, it's really kind of an ideal building site. The owners were very careful in removing some dead trees that they found on site when, after they purchased it last year. They had a professional, a certified arborist come in and assist with some toppings to just let it breathe a little bit more, and that was all done very responsibly without damaging the trees that were trimmed. So, you know, I think in every way, we've done our very best to put together a beautiful home and residence for Mark and Harriet Deswan Aaron's family to enjoy. We've taken pains to make sure that the site is being developed in the very most responsible and sustainable way. Beyond that, there's not too much I need to say. It's really going to be practically impossible to see the house from almost anywhere. So I think it's very consistent with the spirit and intent of the special use permit process and goals as applied to the scenic overlay district. So, I don't know if, I don't think you want me to read my, my presentation from last time unless you want me to take up five more minutes of time. But that's, that's kind of a summary, and we're here to answer any questions as much as to the best of our ability.
Okay, anybody that has questions, please give Melissa your name when you ask the question.
Uraina actually had raised her hand.
Hi, I'm just curious about, it says, "A new house and other projects." What were the other projects?
Well, it's essentially one project. It's, and they are, they're all in, you know, complying with the zoning. So there's a carport, which is an open structure. There's a garage building, which is an enclosed structure for vehicles.
Covered walkway, a pool. I got you, Brad.
Thank you, Melissa.
Full deck, cardboard garage, and a solar array and a sauna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Alex Calad, Calad Casadante. Sorry.
No, you got it. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I guess, so my name's Alex Casadante. My father, Paul Casadante, owns a property that joins James Montserrat. And I know that they've been in contact with the board about this project. So my father couldn't be here tonight, so I just wanted to, I guess, take a couple of minutes. So first, you know, thank you, Peter and Brad, for your description of the property. I have not been over to see it myself. However, I do sort of suspect, I'm sure you've seen the images that we sent, and I sort of suspect that we are probably going to be one of those few properties that will be, I guess, able to see a good portion of the proposed projects. And I mean, I know that obviously the scenic overlay district does not prohibit all development, and certainly it's not our intention to deprive Mark and Harriet of their proposed use of the property. But with that in mind, I mean, as, again, referring to the images that we've sent, you can see that they're, I'm making no allegations of clear cutting or anything like that. However, I mean, there is a very obvious visual impact to, you know, to the side of older Bark Mountain, not just visible from our property, but also from Cooper Lake Road. I don't expect the house would actually, or any of the structures would be visible from Cooper Lake Road. But I guess I do have a couple of questions about the actual structures themselves, specifically, I guess, the solar array. This was not something that I was aware of ahead of time or prior to just now. So I'm wondering what, you know, within, obviously consistent within the requirements of the overlay district, what steps can be taken to mitigate any sort of reflection or visibility of that solar array? Because I know that that is something that, you know, tends to cast light.
Well, the array, it's, thank you, thank you for your question, Alex. The array itself will be ground mounted, so it will be low, low lying. It's not going to be a roof-mounted array. And it is going to be significantly lower than any of the tree canopy or cover or, or screen that Peter was describing earlier that's forward of it and runs downhill. So, and as you know, solar arrays will be oriented, they're fixed. They're not, they don't move like some of the fancy, more expensive designs do. So they're fixed in place, and because the sun is where it is, they are oriented upwards. So whatever reflectivity happens is not going to be experienced across or down or in any way. And for that matter, because of the trees are there, you won't see the array at all from any angle whatsoever. But they will provide green energy and renewable energy for, for the house. I'm not sure it's going to handle 100% of it, but it's going to do its duty to reduce the amount of fossil fuels being used. So anyway, just to summarize, it won't be seen anywhere from any other location.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Alex, just a note for you, Alex, that solar panels are non-reflective, for the very reason they're trying to get the sun in. So they don't, they don't reflect the sun.
Well, I, without, you know, I don't, I wouldn't presume to disagree, but there is also, I mean, those solar panels are obviously 100% effective, right? Which means that inevitably there will be some visible light reflected, but of, you know, neither here nor there. So I guess, and then, I mean, the other, the other question is, again, acknowledging the distinction between the planning board and, you know, building, building code enforcement. The, you know, one of, I mean, my understanding of the scenic overlay district is that one of the critical elements is to reduce visual impacts to, you know, to elevations over 1,200 feet within the town precisely because of the, you know, the impacts of the view shed and maintaining that sort of aesthetic, you know, beauty for everyone. And it does, it certainly seems, and again, maybe this is just a very limited perspective that we have from our property, but it seems that there is a, you know, a very significant impact in as much as there's a large swath that has clearly been removed. And I certainly assume that it has been done as environmentally consciously as possible. But there's also, I mean, I think it's sort of an irrefutable detriment that, you know, that the property has suffered. So in any case, I don't mean to belabor the point. I just, I certainly implore the board to, you know, do everything within, within its power to ensure that those conditions required by the overlay district are met. Thank you.
Judy, if I may, could you bring up the slide that shows the visual impact from One Mile? Which has a couple of photographs from the, the location.
This is what you mean, isn't it?
Yes, that's the, so I just, just so we could see, you know, what the, what the context is from a, you know, micro and macro view, you know, what the human eye sees and what a telephoto lens sees.
So this is a human eye view, more or less.
Yeah, that's correct. The upper photograph.
And that's a telephoto.
Right. And then there's a box within the telephoto that's a tiny portion of the, of the zoomed in, which shows, you know, a little stripe of green from the, from this distance. That's where trees had been topped off and they had since grown in, as was expected, since that, that activity was done, again, by that certified arborist who, you know, did, did exactly what he was supposed to do in, in thinning some of those trees and removing a lot of the, either standing dead trees or laying on the ground dead trees.
I'm sorry, if I may, if I may, just real quick, I, I trust that you did see the, the images that we had sent. And I believe Mr. Montserrat had forwarded, and I think I might have sent a copy as well. I just want to make sure that everyone did receive those.
Yes.
Okay. And I, the only reason I mention is because the, I think they do paint a slightly different, different picture of the view from our property. But again, that's, that is a view from our property. There were some from Cooper Lake as well, where you, I think it is, I mean, it's noticeable, but just wanted to make sure those have been received. Thank you.
Can you find those, Judy?
Um, I'm not sure which ones they are, but I've got them. Is that Neighbor Concerns PDF?
I think so.
That seems like an appropriate name.
Yeah, there it is. Let me see if I can get in closer.
Thank you. I appreciate you showing them. So yes, that was, that was an image taken, I believe, last year when my father was up there for a visit. And then the next two. And so that was after, I guess, some of the clearing had taken place, and you can see that there is a, you know, noticeable ground visibility, which is, you know, at least in part accounts for my concern about the solar panels. So, again, it's, obviously, I defer to the board's judgment. You have far more experience in these matters than I do, but it does seem as though that is a very visible cutout area. Acknowledging that the trees have not been topped, that there's still, you know, that there's still tree cover in those areas, but.
Okay, this is before the cut?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, I apologize for not mentioning that. That was before the cut. Unfortunately, we didn't have a better picture.
Well.
But it is, I mean, you can see that it is a noticeable difference, pre and post. And then a little farther down as well, you can see that is the view from Cooper Lake Road.
And that's zoomed?
Correct.
Is that the last one? No.
And so just above the tree line. One, one more below that shows the, we'll show a zoomed version of that.
So that's this here?
That's correct. Yes.
I'm not getting a visible cursor, unfortunately, but it's just above the darker trees.
Correct. Yes. And so obviously not, you know, not an end of the world type situation, but I'm not sure that it, that it would fall under the, you know, the minimal, you know, minimal visual impact that the overlay, I think, is intended to preserve. So in any case, I appreciate you showing those. Thank you very much. That is, that's all for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Alex.
Are there any other questions from the public or?
I believe Laura.
Laura. I have my hand up. I see James, who could be Jim Moserat, has his hand up in reality, but not a zoom hand, but a hand hand. So I don't know if Jim wants to go first or whether you want me to go first. I guess you called on me. I guess I'll go. So, so, so I did a site visit. I was over at Alex, who just spoke, and who is the next door neighbor of Jim Moserat, and I was over in their property looking over across at the site. And I was on, and the building department, Ellen and Butch took me up to the site, and I got to see the site. So I want to say a couple of things. As people know, I am on the town board. I am here as Laura Ricky. I am not speaking on behalf of the town board, and this is not the town board telling the planning board what to do. This is me, Laura Ricky, giving my opinions. My opinions are based on time spent on the planning board, based on time spent as a liaison to the comprehensive plan committee, where a lot of issues were discussed. And I am also the chair of the zoning revision committee. With the history that I've had, it is my opinion, we have a scenic overlay district. And the overlay district, I heard Peter talk about clear cutting. This is not clear cutting. I don't care about the definition of clear cutting, because in my view, the scenic overlay district law, it's an overlay. It overlays and overrides other laws. So you can have other laws, but the overlay district says, in addition to these things, by the way, this and that. There are two things I want to read from the scenic overlay district law. Law 260, Woodstock Town Law 260-66. If you look at item 1A, it talks about minimization of cut. If you took, look at item 1D, it talks about being as visually inconspicuous as possible. So these aren't finite things with numbers that it doesn't say this number, that number, whatever. It's a bit subjective. And my subjective opinion is, as you look at what Judy just showed us, that Alex, the pictures Alex tooks, Alex took, in my view, there is damage to the viewscape. I, I was elected by the people of Woodstock to try to look out for the people of Woodstock. I understand that people who buy property in the scenic overlay want their wonderful view. So you have a person here who wants a wonderful view, and a person there wants a wonderful view. But the town of Woodstock wants a beautiful viewscape, and that's the reason there is a scenic overlay law to preserve the viewscape. So my opinion, as I look at what happened, first of all, in the pictures, and I saw it firsthand, because I was over at Jim Moserat's property and walking around, walking around as you walk on the property, it's like, oh, there it is. We could see a car. So to say you're not going to see the building from anywhere, we could see a car. A building is bigger than the car. I appreciate that the building is stone. I look at the pictures. Melissa just sent me the pictures of what the plan is, and I agree that the building materials are wonderful. And, you know, being as inconspicuous as possible, it would be great to push it back further from the edge. I heard Peter just say, he didn't think that it could be because he thought that the mountain came up too close. Is it as far, is it as far away from the edge as it could be? Yeah, that's up for the planning board to decide. I was shocked, upset. I don't know what the right word is. The trees topped off. I don't know what it means. We topped off trees so it could breathe. It looked to me, in my opinion, that the trees were topped off for a view. Yeah, I have trees all over my property. I don't run around cutting them and cutting the trees in half to be the half size so they can breathe. They're breathing just fine with all of the branches that they have. I don't get, and that's what Brad Will just said. Oh, we top the trees to let them breathe. You know, what? I mean, I think, well, I don't agree with that statement. So I think the trees were topped purely for the view. That's my opinion. Had those trees not been topped, probably would not see the gaping hole that were shown in the pictures that Alex, that Judy showed that Alex had sent. What, if I had a wish, I would wish that, you know, you can only do so much, and there are certain things that have already been approved, and this applicant is way down the pike. And I 100% appreciate Peter, as he says, well, first of all, I appreciate Peter. I appreciate the planning board. I appreciate all the work done by everybody. I disagree on a couple of points, but that doesn't change the fact of how much I appreciate everybody. And I do appreciate, as Peter said, we'll get together later and we'll do some, some talking about how is the scenic overlay law working? How can we be preventive in the future? But I do think the scenic overlay law was put in place to prevent some of what's happening now. And when somebody said, and I think it was Brad again, said, and the trees are growing back just fine. The trees that I saw, if you take a 40-foot tree and you cut it in half at 20 feet, you've cut all that back. They're not growing back just fine. They're, you know, I didn't see any growing back just fine of the stumps that, you know, the stumps are like 20 feet tall. I didn't see any growing back, and they're like down the hillside, right? So as you're looking out, you cut them 20 feet so that now you're looking straight out, because this tree that's partway down the hillside, you cut it in half. So I'm not seeing it growing back just fine. That's not what I saw when I was there. I saw trees that were cut in half, and, and they're not growing back just fine. I, if I had a wish, and again, this is not the town board telling the planning board what to do, but this is Laura Ricky telling you what I wish you would do. I'm not telling you have to do it, but here's what I wish you would do. What I wish you would do is, and if you believe, as Peter just said, that you don't believe the buildings can go back any further, I do appreciate the buildings are stone. I do believe the viewscape was damaged by this applicant. You looked at the, at the before and after pictures that Alex took. I believe the viewscape was damaged by this applicant. I would love to see the planning board do everything possible to repair the viewscape. I think part of what, again, I was on, I was on the planning board. Part of what we did is we would make sure a site plan showed vegetation. What are you planting? Things can be planted on the hillside. Some people say, oh, you took down a 40-foot tree. You want to go put up a 40-foot tree. I would never say that. I planted trees on my property. I planted a dozen trees two years ago. They're doing just great. You know, you can't plant a 40-foot tree. It's not going to stand up. It's going to fall over. Not smart. But to plant a decent tree, you know, do you want oaks? You want maples? You get a deciduous tree, kind of a compromised solution. In the wintertime, you'll kind of get the view you want because you won't have leaves on the trees, but in the summertime, you'll get that beautiful look of those mountains. And the same thing of what Judy, the picture Judy had up a few minutes ago, where you see the gaping hole. If you look at all the, the, that mountainside, the mountain behind it to the right, behind it to the left, you, you just see a sea of, a sea of trees, a sea of trees, a sea of trees. And then you have, it's like somebody lost their front teeth, right? This gaping hole where this property is. And I do believe that a, what I would, I think a solution that could be is the planning board requiring on the site plan, tree planting of full-size trees. Are you going to have oak, maple, elm, ash? I see Michael Beach of the Tree Committee is here. His committee is excellent at knowing trees, advising, et cetera, et cetera. I believe the viewscape has been damaged by this applicant. I think the pictures are evidence of that. And I think it's within the planning board's realm to require that the viewscape be repaired. And I do believe that planting in front of the building is part of what, what is, what that's for. It's not for the applicant, because I know they want their view, but we have a whole town. We are all serving the town. I serve the town on the, on the town board. The planning board serves the town on the planning board. We're all serving the whole town. To serve just this applicant because they want a pretty view, I get it. Everybody wants a pretty view. But to really serve the town, I believe the planning board should require that the viewscape be repaired. That's Laura Ricky speaking. That is not the town board speaking. Laura Ricky speaking.
Okay. Hey, Laura, I'd just like to get something correct on the record here. 260-66, 1A, is to minimize cut and fill activity and the affecting vegetation restoration of those. This cut and fill, I don't know what you were quoting, but that is code.
That is minimization of cut.
Of, and fill. This is for cut, like digging holes and filling stuff, cut and fill, like foundations and roads. That's cut and fill. That's not cutting trees. Cutting trees, the code says, to minimize. And that's why we need to have a meeting later, because minimize, whose opinion is minimized?
Well, right, but visually inconspicuous as possible is part of D.
You're absolutely right in this case, and we hope that those trees will grow and they will get new branches on and they'll turn nice and green.
They're not. They've been cut in half. If you take an oak tree and you cut it in half, that tree is not just going to be sprouting up and looking wonderful. I, again, you can disagree. I'm not telling you what to do, because you're going to make a decision of what you think is right, and that is your decision. You're an independent board, and we all live with your decision, but you have the ability to require that people plant trees, and that is my hope. You can disagree with me. My hope is you do require them to plant full-size. Yeah, they're not going to be full-size when you plant them, but you get a tree that's going to be an Yeah, they're not going to be full size when you plant them, but you get a tree that's going to be an oak or a maple or an elm or an ash. Enough of them, it will, it will restore the viewscape that has been damaged. Cutting those trees in half and expecting them to sprout out, um, it, it, I don't know, Michael's on, maybe Michael can speak to what.
Okay Laura, I, I absolutely agree. And that's why I want to, at the end of this meeting, I want to set up, call a meeting to go over the scenic overlay. Because there are a lot of issues and this is just one of them. We have before us many cases in the scenic overlay which are totally clear cut already.
Right.
What are we going to do about it? So I don't want to take up time right now. We've got a full agenda.
Gotcha. Okay. So I'm, I'm done. Thank you for, you, you, you heard me. We might disagree. You heard me. Thank you. Um, thank you for letting me speak.
Anybody else have any questions regarding this? Because we do have a public hearing that we're way past due on here.
Uh, I, I do, Peter. Peter?
Yep.
Jim, Jim Monserat has been having.
For quite a while.
Quite a while.
Go for him, Mike. Michael, is that all right? Just hang on.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim?
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, uh, Alex showed you those photos of, uh, some before and afters. So some, sometime between, uh, November, December and mid-January, this huge gap suddenly appeared in older Bark Mountain. Now, I've lived here for fifty-one years and looked out at that mountain and there was never anything out there. But somehow between November, December and mid-January, this huge gap appeared. Now, I don't know, you want to call it clear cutting, uh, whatever, but it's, 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 it's huge. It's enormous. And it can be seen from the three properties up here and also Cooper Lake. Laura Ricky was up on, uh, Saturday. We, we both saw the vehicle. We both said, if you can see a vehicle, imagine what it's going to be when you see five separate buildings and a solar panel device. It's clearly going to be seen and the views up here are going to be ruined. I mean, if you look from Cooper Lake Road, you don't see anything. And now, now we're going to get to see this, this monstrosity if it's not. I don't know. I don't want the guy to not be able to build, but maybe we can require him to push it back farther up so that we all don't get to see it. That's the only thing I'm asking.
Okay, James. Uh, look folk, we're really getting behind on this public hearings here. So. Really quick, please make it quick. Yep.
Yeah, really quick. I, I requested a site visit on behalf of the Tree Committee to this property. Um, I got a call at seven o'clock in the morning from the supervisor telling me to back off, not to go there. Um, so I'm, I'm here tonight to ask the planning board for your permission, your authority for the Tree Committee to just go up and have a look. If, if, you know, if it's as Laura says, I'm frankly, I'm horrified, Peter. I, I don't know how you can justify cutting trees off twenty feet up and just, you know. But I, I would like to see it for myself, uh, and bring, uh, uh, you know, some members of the Tree Committee. We've been to site visits for the planning board before. Uh, we will, I'll come back, you know, table it tonight. We'll come back, give you a report, tell you what we think. Um, so that's why I'm here tonight looking for, uh, the planning board's, uh, okay, to go up there and do a site visit.
One of the things like that, uh, this meeting that we're going to have in the future, you're invited to. Because this is not new in this town. There are many places where people have topped trees, many, on many mountains. This is not the first time this has happened. So.
This is dramatic. I saw it from Cooper Lake, Peter, and I saw it from a Jim Monserat's house. It's pretty dramatic.
I agree.
And, uh, if we're not going to draw the line, if we're not going to draw the line, you know, people are going to keep walking over it. You know that, Peter.
I agree. I understand it, but I'm telling you.
Let's draw the line here.
We're going to have a meeting to discuss this because this is coming up before us.
Okay, before you give this guy his, uh, his, uh, his permit.
Well, we're willing to this project.
No, no, Daniel Young.
Okay, we gotta go on. I'm done.
Daniel Young paid a lot of money for cutting trees and you know that.
Okay, we have another public hearing. We're going to start the next public hearing.
All right. So just close, close the public hearing.
Yes. Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
On favor? Okay.
So. Disagreed.
What's that?
I have a question.
Stuart just had a question.
Stuart, go ahead, Stuart.
So i- is the chair looking to hear back from the Tree Committee or we can just move on?
We're going to move on. We're going to move on. What we're going to do is get the Tree Committee involved in the meeting that we're going to set up after this meeting to deal with all of these issues in the scenic overlay. We're not just going to pick on one person and peck away. We're going to come up with a solution. That's what Laura suggested. And that's what we got to do.
Peter, if I can make a suggestion, would, would you want to consider recessing a public meeting to the call of the chair so we can all discuss it? And perhaps get more feedback from the, from the architect who wasn't given an opportunity to respond to the last two speakers.
I support that. I think we ought to recess.
So do I.
Stuart?
Yes.
Stuart?
Yes.
What's your opinion?
Oh, I, I'm suggesting we recess to the call of the chair to give the board an opportunity to discuss it. And perhaps to hear back from the architect for the owners who wasn't given an opportunity to respond to the last two long present, long statements by people in the audience.
I get that. But what I'm trying to get the point across is that we have many instances in this town where there have been clear cut on top of the scenic overlay. What are we going to do about it?
I understand, but this is not a clear cutting case as we.
It isn't, but do we have them in front of us? There are clear cutting cases coming up in front of us.
Right. So I don't think we should treat this as clear cutting. My, from my point of view, um, one of the problems we have is that the law says what it says, but it doesn't say other things. And so, you know, the building department has not issued a single violation on this property. But yet people are coming in and saying, well, it's violating the standards and the code and all. We have no enforcement power. So everyone wants to drop it in the lap of the planning board to solve a situation where there may be weakness in the law. So I, I don't know. I want to be fair to the, to this applicant as well as to the town. So I think they ought to be given an opportunity to respond further. Uh, and I have no problem with, with the Tree Committee, uh, observing if the owner will consent. But, you know, we, we can't authorize them to go there. They're not the planning.
My planning board just, uh, initially when we first saw this case, the sketch plan review, the, um, just one Aaron wrote a reply to James Monserat and Alex Pesa Dantes that was pretty detailed about what they did. Just, I just want to remind you guys that you saw their rebuttal. That's it.
I think there were two different issues here. One is we need to look at the broader context. The other is we have a case in front of us. Brad has not been given an opportunity to rebut. And we're running out of time on other things. So recessing to the call of the chair so that we have time to get our thinking in order about this, including consulting with the Tree Committee. And then pulling it back together and Brad having an opportunity to respond makes sense to me. If you close it, he doesn't get an opportunity to speak.
Okay. I'll agree with you guys. We'll keep it open to the call of the chair and we're going to go on to the next case.
I agree with that.
Okay. The next case is Richard and Jacqueline Rowley, which is SUP number twenty-one dash zero four six one A. This is a virtual public hearing for a special use permit application to construct a barn in the R five and scenic overlay zoning districts located at seventeen Cross Patch Road in Willow. The rep is Joseph and our rep, I, um, if, if, James was the, our ref to the site, correct? Right. So, um, uh, with the, uh, if, is Joseph here with us? Yes. Okay. So, um, if you want to.
Public hearing.
Yep. Uh, so entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. On the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Joseph, why don't you tell the board, uh, what you want to do there?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Well, um, we have a barn that is actually a replica of a barn that, uh, designed late eighteen hundreds, beautiful barn. Uh, the size of the barn is thirty-six by thirty-four. And basically, uh, that's it. It's just a storage place. It's not for living quarters. Um, and we just want to be able to, to put it up. It's, it's, it's an open swath. If you saw that, James. When you went, yeah, there's no trees there or anything. It's located right behind the, um, the solar panel of bed there. You saw that? Yeah. Okay. Alrighty. Um, and basically it's pretty straightforward to me. Um, you know, it's not much more I can say about this.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Are there, uh, people from the, in the public for this case, have questions for this case? And if not, Melissa, do you have any letters or phone calls regarding this?
I did not receive any comments on this case. Nope.
Okay. Well, as James said, uh, it's pretty straightforward. You can't see it from anywhere. It's a beautiful barn, just a beautiful, beautiful barn. If you could see it from anywhere, that'd be great.
Thank you.
But there's no trees being cut. So, um,
It's a natural pasture as far as I could tell. That's been there for years. So there's nothing to worry about with that. So.
Yeah, I know this site myself, actually. So if there's no other questions from the public, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, we have some sketch plan reviews. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, um, Melissa, you have to tell them that, uh, to get in touch, you need to get the paperwork finished, right?
Yes. And you want to just, uh, approve the application pending draft resolution, resolution? Just the last bit.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
If I may, Peter, make a motion that the planning board approve the application and case number SUP twenty-one dash oh four six one A, Richard and Jacqueline Rowley, uh, subject to, uh, completion of the formal resolution.
On the favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Richard, Joseph, it's just paperwork. We'll talk next week.
Thank you so much.
Resolution, it's a, well, it's some paperwork and.
I have a question. I have a question. I'm going to be there tomorrow, uh, because I have to see Angela on another bill that I'm doing. Um, is there any way I can pick up any paperwork tomorrow or no?
No.
Okay. All right.
It won't be ready until next week.
Okay, fine.
Thanks, Joseph. I appreciate you being on the ball though.
All right.
I'll mail it to you. I'll mail the resolution to you early next week.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we now have a sketch plan review, which is Aaron Van de Bogart, the third, and Gregory Van de Bogart, planning board case twenty-one dash one one three two eight. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision to transfer one hundred and one point six acres in the R five and scenic overlay zoning districts. Located at ninety originally, a hundred and four acres and twenty-nine Aaron's way originally eighteen acres, resulting in two lots of five acres and a hundred and nineteen acres in Mount Tremper. And the rep is, uh, Gregory. Is he here?
He was here.
Is Gregory here?
I can't see with the screen time, but he was. Greg, Greg, you're there, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Hey Greg, why don't you tell the planning board, uh, what you're trying to achieve here?
So basically, alls I'm doing is trying to do a lot line movement for the hundred and one acres that, uh, my father owns, which we have in the forest preserve. Uh, basically so he can afford to pay the taxes. He can no longer afford to pay the taxes even with it in the forest preserve. So I am looking to attach that to my piece of property and take over, uh, basically maintaining it in the forest preserve and paying the taxes on it.
Okay. Uh, board members have questions for?
Is this the correct map?
Yes, that's the correct map.
Yes.
Any, anybody on the board have any questions regarding this proposal? All right. Well, uh, Gregory, I think, uh, we can set you up for a public hearing then.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll just talk with Melissa and, um, figure out, uh, when.
Greg, I'll email you next week.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Greg. Yep. Okay, we have, um, the next application is a sketch plan review for twenty-two Rock City Road LLC. Special use permit twenty-one dash zero three five five C. This is a sketch plan review of a site plan review application for site plan modification to develop outside area for commercial and communal use in the H seven zoning district located at twenty-two Rock City Road in Woodstock. And the reps are Neil and Alexa. Are you here?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Why don't you please tell the board, uh, what you're having in mind to do?
Um, okay. So, uh, just a little bit of history here. I'll, I'll go through this really fast. We obviously opened the colony, um, as a music and entertainment venue, uh, in the spring of twenty seventeen. Um, we were all set for our biggest weekend ever in March of twenty twenty. I think it was about the thirteenth of twenty twenty. And we chose to close down before we had to for obvious health and safety reasons. Um, then when the full lockdown eased in June of twenty twenty, we used the emergency provisions. I hope that's the right term, uh, to open, um, the, the beer garden in the space that you, you see right in front of you in the back of the colony, uh, to provide a safe space for musicians and the public to come together to experience something approximating normal at what was then a very, very difficult time. Um, we obviously closed again because of the weather, the weather last winter and we reopened the garden in a very rainy April, uh, earlier this year. And so at this point, we're, we're basically applying, um, to get the site plan approved, um, to leave the space as it currently is uh, and continue to, uh, continue to operate it, um, as that outside, outside space.
Okay. Uh, members of the board have questions for the applicant?
I guess the only question I have is that you tend to put tables in front of the handicap parking spaces. This is not a good idea.
Oh, okay. Um.
You, oh, no, that must be when we got delivery of picnic tables. That only happened like once.
Okay. I happen to have been, I happen to have been there, so I noticed it.
Yeah. Good note.
We'll definitely, we'll definitely avoid doing that in future for sure.
Can I ask, uh, what the hours of operation are for the outdoor area?
Sure. Yeah, we definitely, um, shut down all the, the, the outside, um, ten o'clock by ten, basically. Yeah. And, uh, and the plan is that now we're beginning to pivot indoors that we wouldn't have outside shows going on at the same time as indoors, which probably makes it a little bit earlier than that as well.
Yeah. I mean, right now we're basically ending everything at nine because it's just getting really kind of chilly out and stuff. But, um, generally we, we have always had a hard cut off of any, um, entertainment by ten o'clock. And if people still want to have a couple of drinks, we let them hang out. But, um, I think officially we have the hours of operation outside as eleven, but music and everything would always be stopping by ten or before.
And, and in terms of opening, I think it's eleven. Sometimes it opens in the weekends. Um.
Yeah, we do brunchish stuff on, uh, Saturday and Sunday starting at eleven and then it's, uh, four o'clock on the weekdays.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's seven days a week?
No, no, no. Uh, it's right now, it's, uh, we're opening on Wednesday because of the farmer's market, but we're probably going to curtail that back. So we'll be closed Tuesdays and Wednesdays again, I imagine, pretty soon. So it'll be five days a week, maybe six during the summer, but, uh, yeah.
And do you rent the space at all for like extra events like weddings, things like that or anything?
That's only inside.
We've donated it a couple of times for, you know, uh, Women's March and fundraisers and memorials and stuff. Um, frankly, all the wedding stuff we have planned is completely indoors because, um, it's just, you know, makes more sense. Frankly, it's a big space for, for one wedding to try to take over. And if we can do lunch outside and a wedding inside, that's just good for us, you know, so.
I have a question, Peter.
Yep, go ahead.
So, um, how do you manage the, uh, uh, sound issues at the property in terms of, uh, volume of performance, amplification and so on? Um, could you address that?
Yeah, sure. Cause I think we've read the letter from Mr., Mr. Grenadier and frankly, we appreciate his feedback and, and input. Um, so, uh, this is a new venture for us. Um, we didn't realize back in, um, the spring of this year, frankly, that we were bringing too much music back to Woodstock possibly. And, uh, it wasn't until late May when we got a, got a heads up from, um, Supervisor McKenna, uh, that there had been some, some complaints. Um, so, um, Um, so um and frankly, and frankly, that first first complaint was triggered by a rather young prog rock band from New Pults that uh obviously we we didn't bring back. Um, we already had a policy, as we've mentioned, of closing the live music by ten o'clock. Um, and then based on that feedback that we got, uh we moved to reschedule any band type type of noise to a bit earlier in the day uh and made efforts to constrain the noise by, you know, booking bands that didn't have really loud percussive uh music and and so on. And we made efforts to reach out to a a couple of people that we knew were concerned to make sure that the feedback was working more effectively, that we were hearing from them, you know, live, real time, rather than um rather than a week later. And then, of course, Delta happened, um which nobody was expecting, and that put all our plans to reopen indoors um uh kind of put pain to all of that. Um, we did have a couple of townwide events that I I would say they were were kind of town um townwide events like, you know, the Secret City event, and there was a reggae festival that happened, I think, in early August or so. Um, and and frankly, we did start to move it because of the Delta variant, we started to move a few of our ticketed shows like Tuberskinny outside because we felt that was a lot safer um for the older community members uh rather than trying to pack people uh inside. Um. A few weeks ago, we were made aware of some additional complaints that had come in, and we ma- again made efforts to address those using more local musicians who I think are a bit more uh aware and respectful of what's going on with the noise um uh to populate the calendar, so we we're trying to sort of make sure that we're using musicians that are uh music style appropriate and noise appropriate, nothing too percussive, et cetera. Um, clearly, we're coming to the end of the outdoor season here, and we'd like to think that, we hope to think that we provided a surface that is generally broadly enjoyed by the community, and uh we're also very happy that we're able to continue to employ our staff and and pay the musicians that have been able to uh to join us. But we're also very aware that we've got more work to do, uh and now that we understand the noise traveling issue, um that we need to to make efforts to both constrain the sound as well as exploring maybe options uh to to like noise baffling, perhaps with trees that could help to mitigate that problem. And and we're very happy to continue working uh to find a good balance in that. Um, frankly, Neil and I aren't happy when we're sitting at the table and when out of musician, out of town musicians join us and don't really understand the local community dynamics, and they start to turn up their amps um on the fly. We need to make sure that that doesn't happen uh going forward, particularly bands with loud percussive drums, and and we need to take the measures necessary to to address the whole issue. But if possible, we'd appreciate the uh the opportunity to be able to take uh steps to to make sure it's comfortable and acceptable to everybody in town uh as we hopefully open again next season. Um, I would hope that solo singer songwriters and acoustic duos uh uh shouldn't be uh much of a problem to anybody and very uh and smaller local bands with music of an appropriate style uh would not be of concern. I don't think we've had uh complaints when it's, you know, local musicians that we know and trust and who know the the deal here. Uh and we just need to be a lot more discerning about avoiding booking the louder acts next season, although maybe from five till seven on a Friday and Saturday, we could have a slightly fuller sound, but obviously something that's that's appropriate. Uh, nothing that's completely out there, and we'd like to continue our weekend brunches with light blues, jazz, bluegrass and Irish music. We haven't had any complaints with that, so a- as I say, we're very aware of the issue. We don't like it when, you know, when we have problems and as I say, it's early days, we'd like to learn learn from what we've learned and the feedback that we've had this season to make sure we can make it work for everybody, but we appreciate the feedback for sure. Hopefully, that that kind of.
One of the biggest things has been the with the Delta moving some of the bigger touring bands. It was only like maybe three, I think. Moving them outside, those guys bring their fancy own sound engineer, and we could hit them with hammers.
We don't need that.
Down, and they're like, no, these guys are loud, trust me, and we had to physically go up on stage and turn them down, and um I'm all for I'm pushing my sound guys to be very aggressive, and they're getting the memo, thank God, but sometimes the drummers just hit too damn hard and uh, you know, we can't, you know, so we, it there's a lot of mitigation that we're aware of and we're we're very much on it.
Thank you for your answers.
Thanks for the question.
Um, if any other board members have questions for the applicants? If not, then the next step would be Neil to uh to come up with a site plan showing, you know, what's on that site, the stage.
They have it. They, that came with the.
Oh, I did see it. I did see it right. Okay, yeah, so that's. Um.
You want it up?
Um.
That, that's up to you.
Put it up for the moment, just so everybody can see. I do remember seeing it, yes. But just uh.
Thanks, Judy.
Well, that way, if the board has any.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, did I put it up?
Uh, didn't come up.
I, because I didn't share screen. There we go.
Peter, uh Steve and Joan are waving their hands, so you can get to them before we finish.
Okay, well, now we got the site plan. Stephen, Johnny, got questions? Uh, please.
Can you can you hear me here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, I think I, you know, I wrote a letter, and I think I expressed um pretty much, you know, what I felt.
Mister, Mister Grenadier that Alexia had mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
You know, um, you know, I think that the town board, I mean, the planning board really has to consider, um, I really appreciate the colony and I appreciate what they done, and I understand uh why the supervisor, you know, gave them a special permission to put out this outdoor event, and I think it's really done great things um during the time of COVID, but this will come to an end. And as I say, I think, you know, amplified outdoor music, um the town, when it it passed its um its noise ordinance, I think made it pretty clear how it felt about uh um uh amplified music and 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 noise going past the property line. Um, you know, I don't think any, so I'm kind of an absolutist. The town has never been good at enforcing noise ordinances. Um, it's never been good at uh enforcing clear cut uh things and lots of things that the town is has has tried to enforce, and I I understand the sincerity of the people from the colony, but um, you know, this is just opening the door. Um, if you allow it here, it's gonna be, it's gonna pop up all over town. I think the ca- I think it's been so successful, the cash register is run, and people can see what um outdoor amplified music will do for them, and I think the planning board and the whole town has to take a really appreciate the the soundscape that we have. And the townscape exists, you know, it's all day long. It's not an hour, it's it's not volume, it's everywhere. And I think that we really have to appreciate the soundscape that we have and protect it, and um you know, I don't, I I think the colony was doing really well uh indoors, and I think that we should really um continue to uh oppose any kind of amplified commercial outdoor uh taking of our soundscape.
Okay.
Now, uh, if you have any, you know, comments or questions on that, but but that's the way I feel. That's where I think the planning board and the town itself should view um these type of issues.
Okay, that's a very good point. Um, as far as the site plan goes, the planning board members have questions about the site plan. I guess the first question is, it shows all the picnic tables. They're obviously movable. Um. So, um I guess this would be one scenario of a site plan, because you could have less tables or whatever, correct?
Um, sure.
It's, but it's been pretty set inside. It it's been pretty set.
It's pretty much the same capacity seated outside as it is inside, which we found to be kind of a convenient uh way of thinking about it.
Yeah.
Alright, so does any board members have questions about the site plan so that we can set them up for um either a public hearing or or a s- a third sketch review or second sketch review?
Oh, I guess I do.
Okay, Judy.
Um, you're paying for parking offsite, I assume.
They're grandfathered in for all their parking.
Oh, well, they're certainly close to parking, so it isn't a problem.
Yeah, we haven't had, uh that came up when we we met in early twenty twenty, the concerns about, you know, what this caused a problem. I I can honestly say that we we, I mean, I've driven it, it's, you know, between the between the two lots that were between, it's, they've never been complete, unless it was it was Firework Day or something, or Volunteer's Day or something, it's uh, yeah, it really hasn't hasn't happened.
Okay.
Awfully, we have a seasoned planning board member as our chair, and he remembers you were grandfathered in.
Alright, so other than the site plan itself showing the the physical location of things, um in the uh resolution, we're gonna have to address obviously hours of outdoor sound.
Yeah.
Um. And uh is there anybody on the board have other things that should go into the resolution?
I have a question, Peter.
Yeah, go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, uh so are there any issues about of outside lighting during the nighttime portion? I know that they're probably aware they have to be dark skies compliant and all, but has that been an issue at the property?
Not at all. I mean, we have a very, very um sort of a, I don't know, understated.
We, yeah, we'd appreciate feedback on that. I mean, we've we've given the information about.
See the uh the style of lamp, and it's uh.
Got caps on it and.
To my eye, it's been muted, and you know, that's always appreciated. I just want to avoid it becoming, you know, something else that.
Yeah. I do think there's something that they're addressing at some point where we had to add a little more lighting to the entry area and the driveway area. That's that's just not lit at all, and you know, so.
Well, it's a safety issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So uh if you are gonna add lighting, maybe you should put that on the site plan now, so you don't have to come back for it.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
But, cutie.
Anybody else on the board have questions? And if not, Melissa, can we set them up for a public hearing?
We can. Your rain has a question.
Go, Judy.
Let me ask a question. I don't know where the gentleman who was complaining about the noise lives relative to this, but I know that the acoustics of a valley are complicated. And it may be that there is a better site for that stage that would generate less sound in places where people live. I'm not even sure how you would find out. I guess you would need a sound engineer.
You guys.
Oh, that's a really fair point. There's there's a few other, um, well, there's at least one other replacement that we considered, um, and we're all for experimenting and trying every every little thing we can do.
For sure.
Okay, well, if everybody's good with the.
Arana's hand is up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
I I just wanted to um kinda, I was living up in Ojaiyo and around and talking about the acoustics. And I, I don't know, I grew up here, and we're in an artist colony, and the music sounded like um there's, the the hills are alive with music. It wasn't too obtrusive. I couldn't hear actual words. It was always very nice um and enjoy, you know, I enjoyed it. I think there's a lot of people in our community that do enjoy the sound, and I I just to remind everybody, last year and the beginning of this year, I mean, we were all stuck in our houses and had nowhere to go, and the owners of the colony created an environment that was safe, and we could go back out and see our community members. So, um, and and it's also bordered by two cemeteries and a parking lot and a street. Um, I don't, I think it's kind of a unique place, and it's been a wonderful um addition to our community out of a need and necessity. But I think Peter, Pete Kagan is a sound engineer and could probably answer that question, so I'll leave it to him.
I just coincidentally am on for a separate hearing, but if you'd want me to chime in, I'd be happy to. I helped Neil and Lexi build a sound system for the interior. And I certainly could help with the site plan if it continues that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Okay, so Melissa, we'll set them up for a public hearing, uh but we need to make sure that the resolution addresses uh.
Noise of operation, yep, yep, yep. Yep. And.
Conceivably, they could, they might end up revising this with Pete Kagan's advice.
Alexia and Neil, if you guys want to think about that light, it'd probably be a good time to get it on the site plan too.
Okay.
And, um, so then when we have the final site plans and they're signed off, then you guys can work on that. Just then, you don't have to come back and see us.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so we'll talk. We'll schedule the public hearing. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for everything, guys.
Good luck.
Hey.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have um a uh a sketch plan review for Paul Rolnick and Sabina Barret at planning board case number twenty-one, one, two, two, seven. This is the second second sketch plan review of a lot line revision application to transfer six tenths of an acre from Elwin Lane, originally with seven acres to the other address in Ellen Lane, which is originally two point eight acres, establishing two lots of six point five acres and three point five acres located in the zoning, in this R three zoning district in Woodstock. Um. Okay, Judy, do you have the map that they uh?
They sent in.
I think so, yeah. I just have to find it. This one, isn't it? Alright.
So, I I just want to give a little history.
Which which of these do you want me to open, please?
Uh.
No, line, lot line adjustment, that one.
Lot line adjustment, yeah.
Okay, so I just want to give a little history quick that might be helpful. Um, the Rolnicks are planning to sell the Kagan's a piece of their property. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what's happening. So they came to us, and Peter realized that the lands had significant wetlands on it, so we, the planning board suggested that they have the wetlands delineated. So they did. So all members here, they haven't sold the land yet, so they need your help, planning board.
Okay, uh is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the situation, folks. Um, I understand that uh well, Judy, can we flip the screen around so we get it north and south?
I don't think I can.
Oh, okay, well, um, let me just.
Well, maybe I can. I have to, I mean, I've got this one.
I'm sure you can.
That's north and south.
Turn it counterclockwise.
Rotate it ninety degrees to the left.
Can you, I don't know if I can do that in in that's, in that view. That's the question.
Alright, well.
Maybe, maybe, let's see. Come on now, what am I looking for? Oh, I'm looking for, I'm looking for this. So the question is, can I rotate that? Uh, view. Yeah.
Keep going, just keep clicking until it's what we want to see.
Keep going around and around.
You're a pro, you're a pro.
That's it, that's it.
Okay, so here's the.
Get out a little bit.
Okay, so here's the issue. There's three lots here. There's lot thirty-four, which is the one to the right. The one on the top, I don't have my sheet in front of me, so I I can't read the number, but that one on the top and the one on the bottom. The one on the top had a, if it was a flag lot, and it had an entrance flag going down to the entrance way. The owners, or the owners of lot thirty-four did not want the driveway to be shared. So what they wanted to do is delineate the the one lot line of the dogleg or the pole lot and keep the other one, so that the flag pole lot is part of their lot. There, all the driveway is on their lot. But in doing so, the new lot line, which is the fifty-foot piece at the top of that flagpole, makes the top lot five point one 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 three oh, whatever it is, landlocked. And the planning board can't approve a lot that's landlocked. So that lot, there's two choices. You can remove the lot line between the lower lot and the upper lot, making it one big lot.
So that would be like this.
Right, exactly, which in the future, if you wanted to come before the board to subdivide it again, you could. The other option, you you can remove the fifty-foot line that got put in, and then the top lot would belong to the lot thirty-four. That would all be one lot.
This one here?
Right, that if you remove that fifty-foot line, then that would become one lot.
Yeah.
We had originally tried to uh put a driveway in. You see where the, we own the house with the pond. Listen, people have been talking. Our original plan was to go along the western border of our property, which we realize now has that large area of wetlands along the northwest portion. Uh, is there a way to still build a driveway across the wetlands? Is there anything we can do to build it up, or is it just a no-go?
It's basically a no-go to put a road through the wetlands. Um, the.
Ah, that's another part that's there that I didn't map, because the number wasn't there. Okay.
The issue is that, like I said, we can't create a a landlocked lot. So if you eliminate the line between the two, you would have one big lot, which in the future, if you wanted to sup, you know, make a subdivision of it, if you could figure a way to get to it, you could. Um. So those are kind of. So those are kind of your options. The problem is where the flag lot is, the flag part of the entrance is, there's a lot of wetlands right there. And that doesn't even have the 100 foot buffer around them. So if you put the 100 foot buffer around it, to get from there to that small area in the middle of the top lot that's the only upland would be quite an undertaking. So.
No, I'm not sure if this is true, but when I was with the wetlands biologist, he was showing the southeast corner of the back lot, of the northernmost lot. There's that small stream. He was under the impression that was the original plan was through the flag pole and to cross the stream right there. Yes, exactly where that is.
Yeah.
And that that seemed like a viable way because the banks apparently were steep. And that's probably why they planned it that way because you could, I suppose, pour foundation on either side into a bridge. I wonder if there's a way to do that slightly west of that so we could give the Rolnicks the flag pole and build a driveway a little bit to the west so they would also have privacy so it wouldn't go in front of their house and still access the back northernmost lot.
You mean like this?
Or yeah, or even just a teeny bit, like if we went up to the beginning of the flag pole and then stayed away from their house and kind of veered west. Yeah, exactly. Doesn't appear to be any wetlands there, except for the stream crossing.
Well, there's wetlands and if you put the buffer around, obviously that becomes enormous. But the other issue is that until the planning board votes on a wetland and water course permit, we can't guarantee that you can do that.
Mr. Cross, could I break in with a question? It's Paul.
Sure.
You know, you talked about the north, the west side of the Kagan's property and the northwest corner with wetlands as being an area where you wouldn't want a driveway. But is there any kind of logic or way that you folks look at preservation or conservation of wetlands wherein there's possibly an offset, which is to say, what if there was a driveway there but not on the, anywhere on the flag? Is there, is that possibly a way you could look at and say, gee, we're, we're, you know, we're using, we're putting a driveway on a wetlands here on the northwest corner, but in so doing, we're preserving or conserving that whole south, I'm sorry, northeast area. What, does that make sense?
He's talking about mitigation.
Yeah, it's called mitigation. And if you went through the wetlands of water course permit process, that would become part of it, that that would be part of the mitigation. Crossing that stream there would take some engineering. I mean, you'd have to have the area topod and you'd have to have it engineered. I don't know.
Wouldn't that be an argument then for going up the west side of the property? The Kagan's property, I mean?
There is a stream crossing there. It's not as big, but it's.
Right.
It is something.
So, you know, you have to engineer a way to get in there and it's a complicated process because you have to go through the wetlands of water course permit process. And to even get permission to go through the wetlands and then come up with a plan for a bridge, maybe something that doesn't. You know, that, I don't know that a culvert is the best solution in that case, but that's not my call. That would be a, you know, between engineering and the wetland water course permit. So, yes, what you could do is move the line where the flagpole lot is now, move it over, like you said, 20, 30 feet to make room for another possible driveway. That was.
I want to point out that these two lines are probably the same thing. They're two different shape files, but this one is a New York State wetland. And that's the stream that is probably in it. Where it falls relative to your property, I don't know, because that's a problem with this kind of mapping.
Seems like they already are crossing it to get to their house. The Rolnicks are.
Right, so that's the only other thing I can suggest is to put another entrance to the top lot. You know, put another flagpole entrance to it.
On the east side of the Kagan's property.
Right.
In other words, it would be similar to where the flagpole lot is now, the flagpole portion, but just slightly west would give them more of a buffer away from their house.
Right. So you could configure it like that. We can approve the lot line revisions. And then when the time comes that you want to get to that back lot, would be the whole issue of doing the engineering and doing the wetland water course permit.
What about if the Kagan's were to access the back lot? Just skirting the eastern edge of the wetlands, which are in the north and west of their lot?
I mean, we have solar panels right there and the house is right there. So I don't think it's really.
Not I, I'm just trying to explore the other options.
Yeah, no, I understand. I looked at that too, but yeah, there's the garage and you see right behind it that we can't sell on the map, but there's solar panels there.
Somewhere over here?
No, you're talking about Paul to the west of our house, northwest of our.
Again, on the eastern edge of that wetlands, as it's demarked on the map, is that a pathway?
You'd still end up having to cross the stream and go through the wetlands near the property line.
And you can't see, but there's solar panels right there. It's not, like, if you look at the house and the garage, there's a larger array there.
Right. And then the other point I'm saying is that down to the east of your pond where the wetlands are delineated mark, they don't have the 100 foot buffer around them. So your new entrance would be going through quite a bit of wetland buffer and wetlands. So. I, you know, I can't say what the vote would be about it, but it's not a clear path. Let's put it that way. There's no clear path to get back there without engineering or finding a way to cross the wetlands in the creek.
How long does the wetlands application take generally if we wanted to propose to figure it out?
Oh, probably two months, Melissa, right? Wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
By the time you get the application, we have a couple of meetings.
I'd say like four months max, just in case, you know, the drawings aren't up to par and we have to have a little mitigation. Four months max.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to proceed. We don't want to have, obviously, we can't have a landlocked property. We don't want to have it conjoined to our property. Doesn't make sense.
So then, then I suggest, you know, just put, put another flagpole, you know, along the western side of that one. At least that'll make it a legal lot. It's just, you're going to have some hurdles to jump through to get to it, but.
Paul and Sabina, where are you? How do you, what do you think we should do?
Well, we're, you know, this whole process for us started with preserving our privacy on that flagpole.
Yeah, understood.
Flag lot. So a flag, you know, having your driveway just west of there is what I'm hearing the board saying is the most realistic way to accommodate that. Does that, does that sound right? I guess that's a question for the board.
Any board members got some ideas on that? Because you know, we can't create a landlocked lot and once, you know, once the lot is now recreated as a, as a legal lot, we're going to have to try to find a way to get to it.
Can't you do an easement? I mean, can't you like put a driveway in wherever you want and then just grant an easement to the other property?
Well, yeah, but that's not the issue. The issue is going through is if you, that area is very hilly. It's all quarries and stuff and it's very hilly. And the little creek that runs through has wetlands on either side of it. So it might take a bit of engineering to come up with something that doesn't disturb or block that up. Because don't forget to get to the upland in the middle of the upper lot. The only upland is that what you see in the middle there. So you still got to go.
Here.
Right. So everything from.
Everything else around here is at least buffer.
It's all buffer. So to get the driveway, we'd be going through wetland streams and buffers.
Wow.
And.
So that white area outside, the kind of, in the northern lot, that white area with the center, I guess there's like a center, it looks like the whole thing's a weird donut. That white area is the buffer around wetlands? So you can't put a driveway?
Yeah, that's the buffer.
100 feet buffer for wetlands.
Right. And like I say, down below in the lower lot where there's wetlands, right where your hand is over there, it doesn't show the buffer around that. So you put 100 foot buffer around that and you got, you know, 150 foot of stream buffer and wetlands to get through, to get there. So you know, I don't think there's any other way to get to that lot.
Could I come back to something? I didn't, I mean, you guys sounded dubious about it, but maybe it was a no, and I just wanted to say it again to make sure. If the Kagan's were to be able to engineer a driveway over that west, north corner of their property into the back lot.
You mean here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Idea that there's a mitigation concept involved in that the whole east side is being conserved.
This side.
Right, right.
This is.
That's a good point. I personally haven't been over on that side, but it hasn't been delineated. It's just kind of a rough idea where they're showing the wetlands there that it wasn't flagged. So we don't know exactly how big the wetland is there. So you'd probably have to flag that and then see.
I think he did flag that when he was here.
The western part?
I believe so. Wasn't that on the other map with the?
No, no, but if you look at the map, it's just a, see, there's no numbered flags. See where the flags are numbered all around the other lot?
I do see that, yeah.
That's where, that's where the delineator put his flag. So they haven't flagged the part over there because I guess they assumed that it was too bad to get through.
You know, it was funny. He was here like right after it rained for like two weeks and it was very wet. And he just was like, this is never going to work.
But it certainly seems to me that that is your best option is to go up the western side.
As far as giving the Rolnicks privacy, it seems, I don't know much about building over wetlands. It was certainly very wet when he was here, but other times of year it strikes.
And it's, you know, the other option of somewhere on the east side seems, you know, like a long haul also. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not hearing you guys say that you think one, even just on a practical engineering basis, is a whole lot easier slash better than the other. That sound right?
Yeah, it's a tough call. If you want to look at going up the west side, we should explore it more thoroughly. And and.
I need to, I need to get this on, on this map because then we'd have a better idea where things are.
Well, the next step, work with the wetlands biologist to flag the left side and then try to get a proposed engineer driveway plan?
Yeah. You mean on the left, on the, on the western side of the lower lot?
The western side of the lower lot or to the west of the current flags?
Right.
We would need an engineer's plan.
Yeah, it'd probably be your best way to go, I would think. Because the way the existing flagpole is, it's a really tough place to get through.
That's not what I meant to do, sorry.
It's it's a tough spot to try to cross, so.
This is, this is your property line, right?
Right, right. That's where they want to go up and down, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our property.
Yeah.
And you want to take it from Elwin?
Yeah.
Up along the edge.
There's a little right away. We had it on the proposed map from the previous meeting.
Yeah.
There's a right away that goes out to the back of Andy Lee Field. And the proposal was to use that right away and then just before it caught to the town property to go north through our property.
It's probably your best thing to look at. So.
Should we work with Melissa on exactly what you guys need to see? I mean, I understand what you're saying. I don't know how to turn it into the precise.
Well, we have, you'd have to flag that side of the wetland and then locate it. And. Yeah.
Do that because I'm not getting that yet, what flagging means exactly.
It means the delineator determines where the boundary of the wetland is and then he puts a ribbon there with a number on it so that it gets placed on the map correctly.
Right. And so there's that. And then, so that's like the definitive marking of the wetlands area. And then there would be some other document which shows you how a road would be built or a driveway would be built.
You want to, you want to reach out to an engineer.
Yeah, it has to pass some sort of wetlands board or how does that work?
You come back to us.
And it would be a trade-off, like you're saying, that by not going through where it is now, we preserve that. And so that would be your mitigation. Say that, okay, we're not going to go through the flag lot where it is now. We're going to preserve that area and try to go through the other side.
I just want to make sure we're clear on the steps so we don't come back and waste anybody's time. So we got to get the wetlands biologist in, flag the western portion of the property and then have a proposal from an engineer that will then pass some sort of wetlands board or who does have to get by?
You would come back, you would come back to the planning board to get the wetlands water course permit, but the planning board would review what the engineers have proposed.
Oh, I see.
To see that it's the least amount of disturbance possible. And and what they can do to, you know, cross the creek properly. And in that side, a culvert might work. I don't know. It'd be an engineering call. But certainly, I think it would be better to look at going up the western side. At least look at it.
What do you think, Paul?
Yep.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Sounds like the next step. I guess these things just take a long time, so we'll.
They do. You know, unfortunately, I know you guys thought this was a really simple lot line revision, but when Peter looked at it, he realized that there was serious wetlands on there.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. It's a tough spot, I know. So it's going to take a little get there. I mean, we got to get you in there because it's an approved lot. So somehow we got to get you in there.
Is it already approved the way the flags stick is?
Approved the way it is now. It's an, it's an existing lot of record, as they say.
So we know that it can go through that buffer on some way to be able to build that.
Right. I mean, the issue is that the lot was created long before the wetlands law went into effect. The lot was created that nobody cared about crossing the stream or the wetlands.
Hey, we're filling them.
Right, right. That makes sense. Okay.
All right. Sorry, we couldn't solve it right now, but bring it back and we'll work on it again.
Appreciate it. Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay. So under discussions and comments, we have a possible training and funding for the RGIS and proposal. Which I know Judy was working on that, correct?
Yeah, let me explain. A number of things have come up.
Complete Streets, housing oversight. I have reached sort of the limits of my skills and I've been asking people like Tom Hines at the county to give me free consults when I bump into something. One of the things that involves that is actually changing the outline of the wellhead protection overlay so that it follows property lines. And what I tried to do didn't work and I don't know why. So at Gretchen's suggestion, I contacted a couple of G I S guys and one of them is named Neil Curry. And he teaches at Vassar. He's also on, I think he works as a full time planner for one of the counties. And he is willing to try to hook me up with a student who could be an intern who could train me and Aaron or Alex from W E C in the use of this. So we have additional people who have the skills and we also need to go to the new software because the existing software will not be supported after next year. What I need right now is to be able to call somebody for like fifteen minutes at a time and say, I'm trying to do this. How do I do it? And if I do it on Zoom and I video it, then I will have a way to review what I was taught so that I will get it nailed. Because these are things that if I don't do them several times in a row, or then I do them and they work and then a month or two goes by and I try to do them again and I've forgotten something. It's really complicated. Curry Neil Curry, who's the guy at Vassar who could get me an intern and he's pretty confident he can do that in the in January, suggested that the town hire him to offer me consultations like in fifteen minute chunks, which is enough to get a lot of a lot done. He sent me a proposal, but unfortunately, the proposal had a rate sheet attached that covered everything that his company does.
Do you want to apply to what we're looking for?
What we wanted, he said a hundred and ten dollars an hour with minimum chunks of fifteen minutes. And he and I thought that six hundred bucks would probably take me through the end of the year and Melissa suggested making it an ask of seven fifty so we have a little margin. I might not use all of it. But it would greatly expand my skills. And if we get the intern, then we get a bunch of free service helping me and Aaron and Alex or whoever in W E C wants to learn this. And if anybody else in planning board wants to learn it to get translated from the old software that I have some skills with to the new software that looks different and I may be able to learn some of it, but it's going to save me a whole lot of time to have somebody that I can talk to.
Well, you don't have to sell me. You got to sell the the financial wizard of our town.
Yes. We I spoke to Judy. I'm a exactly. You don't have to sell me. I'm a hundred percent in support of this and I my take is this is the future. This is the future of the planning board. Alex is willing. Aaron is willing. They're younger. Like this is such I don't think any of the boards realize how much we use the mapping and how much we use the screen share and how much Judy does for us.
I want to point out two things. One is since we went to Zoom, we finally are getting our materials from applicants in electronic form and we can put them up on the screen whether we're on Zoom or in the office. We never had that before. The other thing is if you were paying a consultant the time that I put in, you would not be happy.
No, they wouldn't do it. They wouldn't pay.
Stuart's got a question for you, Judy.
Well, actually, I would want to make a motion. I make a motion that the planning board unanimously authorized Judy Kerman to make an app, make a request of the supervisor in town board for the funding that she referred to for the project that she referred to.
And I will get a better proposal from him, one that's clearer about the money.
I just hope that it doesn't impair your poetry writing.
I, when Judy and I spoke, I caught Supervisor McKenna and I broached it with all the positivity in the world and said, I have this in my budget and I'm willing to use this and this. We'll see where it comes out of, but a proposal will determine and we'll take it to them. But we wanted you guys to be aware. I think this is wonderful. I can't thank Judy enough for everything she does for us.
I want to point I want to point out something. It shouldn't come out of the planning board's hide. Because the Housing Oversight Committee is already using my skills and already pushing the limits. And the Complete Streets Committee, Ashley and I have a little a little conspiracy that we are going to put a parking map up on the town website. It's already in existence. I've already done the map.
I agree. So we'll work all that out. We're going to get the proposal. We're going to turn it over. I'm going to write a pretty letter and yes. But we wanted you all to know and be in support of this.
Okay, great, great.
And excuse me, Peter, in planning for the future, a younger member of the planning board should attend the training simultaneously with Judy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't know if that entails a different fee or not from your instructor, but.
No, when we get to the when we get to the training, John, that's going to be with an intern and it shouldn't cost us anything. Right now, I'm just trying to get past some some barriers in what I'm trying to do for the committees that I'm on, including the planning board.
Understand.
Good point. Good point.
But it was a good point.
Okay.
If I may, I just want to point out that budget hearings are next week. So Melissa, are you on the schedule for next week for if he needs? Perfect. Thank you.
We don't have a proposal yet for this. So but Supervisor McKenna is aware that we were talking about this in the amount.
Sure, but I'm saying next week's next week's a good week to lock it in because once the budget gets approved, it's very hard to change it.
Is that the budget for twenty twenty two? Because we're talking about twenty twenty one.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Which means moving some money.
Stuart's got a question, I think.
I have another question. As long as someone brought up Laura brought up the the budget meeting and all. Does the is does the town boards budget that they're contemplating have money that's segregated for the planning board in order to be able to retain consultants when we need? Or is it lumped in with all other town boards?
The planning board has its own line.
And how much is on the line for for a consultant?
I'd have to check. Melissa might know.
Zero since I've been here.
Zero dollars.
Money has been moved, Laura, by the supervisor. And conjunct put in conjunction with other funds from other entities within the that it really shouldn't have been because we have no latitude when it comes to this. And this really constrains the planning board in the not only in education and in this kind of but also in our legal issues. I mean, it's it's serious and it needs to be dealt with.
We can't manage our access to consultants unless we know how much we have to commit to it dollar wise.
Well, again, so Melissa, you're the one that goes to the budget meeting next week.
I do. And every year we ask for money and it's been denied.
We don't get it.
This year we're asking for three thousand five hundred dollars. Last year we asked for a thousand.
And we didn't get either, Laura.
For consultants. Okay. And and by the way, I'm still here because I know at the end of the meeting, Peter was going to set the meeting for the other thing. I don't mean to be eavesdropping on your meeting, but.
Oh, no, you're not.
Public meeting.
Yeah, I know it's a public meeting. But but I don't want to, you know, anyway, I don't want to overstay my welcome here. But it is so you would like help in convincing the supervisor that you need the three thousand dollars.
Well, persuade the town board. This is the town board's decision?
Correct. It takes three three is a quorum on the town board. So you would need three people to say, we want this extra money. And then oftentimes then the town board would need to figure out where will it come from? Because we're right under the cap. So I don't think we're going to want to raise the total. So if we add more money here, we would look where it comes from.
Can I make other one other comment? We have several telecom cases that are in the hopper. And those are legal intensive in my view. And we already went through the first Crown Castle application with with T Mobile and there's now A T and T, I understand, is about to hit our table and I don't know what else there is. But, you know, without discretionary money that we can deploy to call our attorney when we have questions, which we will have, our hands get tied and it's it's difficult for us to perform our jobs. So, you know, I know this meeting is coming up next week, but we're trying to get this across and my recollection is that there was one question put to the supervisor and he says, there's money in the budget for your attorneys, but you know, you're telling me it's not segregated and no one's telling us how much. So essentially, we're zero. And it makes it difficult for us to do our job.
Well, I would need to look it up. I I can't say, is it there? Is it not there? I'm saying I don't have it memorized where it is, but I am. But we should be able to look it up. And then I do have the budget in my inbox for twenty twenty two. I haven't looked at it yet. But maybe, I don't know if there's safety in numbers, as Melissa goes, I don't know whether either Stuart or Peter or you're well spoken on this matter, Stuart. Peter is the chair. I don't know whether Melissa would like a buddy when she comes to the meeting, but.
Well, frankly, I don't think she needs it. And the request has already been put in and the rationale has already been put in, you know, I I don't understand. I'm hoping there's not resistance to it, but I don't understand it if there is because we're appointed volunteers and we have an important job to do, especially on these large issues where half the town comes out. You know,
Sure.
we need help on that.
So and now your attorney is different from the town's attorney. Would that be a true statement? Or just, okay.
We are his client. The town board is not his client. And so, you know, he has to look to our interest.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing your justification. I'm not sure whether I actually got it. Maybe I got it and it's in my inbox. I didn't see it or whether.
There was a memo to the town board that went out weeks ago. I can give you the date.
Perfect.
All right, everybody, there's one more.
No other thing. September sixth, September twenty second, Laura, I sent a memo from us to Supervisor McKenna and the town board.
And Laura, I appreciate you. I appreciate your listening and your attention to this as liaison and so on. I think it's it's helpful and I I'm just asking for further follow through on this item.
Yeah. Well, I wish I was a liaison. I'm actually not your liaison. I wish I were, but because I could I could maybe fight more for you. But but anyway, yes, I I I feel very, there's a sweet spot in my heart for the planning board because I was a member. And and you guys are great. And you're right, very important position. You're one of the boards. We have volunteer, you know, we have a lot of volunteer boards. Some people are appointed. Some people have an importance enough that they are actually sworn in, which is what the planning board is. And you make you independently make decisions that affect the town. It's an extremely important job. So I appreciate that you're looking to have a high standard to do that with with the right with the right professionals.
Well, I hope you get in there and mix it up for us. Okay.
I'll work with Melissa on that.
Okay.
Stay with us, Laura. Stay with us, Laura. We got one last thing we got to sort out here.
Yep.
We have a workshop, the next, the last workshop we have is coming up is December thirtieth. And I don't know that people want to, you know, the day before New Year's want to do that.
It's my birthday.
Out here. But we have to have a meeting with the town board members. It would be Laura with the with Stock and Bar Metal Commission with the the new zoning commission with scenic with you know, the lands. We have to deal with the scenic overlay law. It's coming up. What we went through tonight is nothing to what we're going to be facing. And I'm just going to give you an example. We have a case before us at the next meeting, I think. It's a subdivision. It's it's up at the end of Ray Cliff Road, the very, very end of it. It's a big piece of property, but the one lot is on a ledge that overlooks the entire Hudson Valley. It's the biggest view I've ever seen in my life. It had a house on it. They ripped. They took the house down. The whole lot is cleared and I'm talking clear cut by the by the term clear cut. Everything's clear. There's not a tree there. They're coming before us to get that lot created for something to recreate that lot. It's up to us or somebody to tell the owner or the potential buyer that where they want to put their house is not going to be approved. And that's you're talking a million dollar lot here. They're not going to take it sitting down.
Right.
And we're going to tell them, no, there's no way you could hide the house. It's totally open to everything and you can't do it. That's one. We have another one, which is on the end of Day Road, which is the biggest clearing that you can see from anywhere in town. It's the biggest scar on the mountain. And this guy is coming before us to put a house right there in that scar where there was one before. And we've already told him, no. They're going to come after us.
Right.
We have to have some kind of a we I'm not going to try to solve it now. Obviously, I think we need to have a meeting with everybody involved and pin this thing down for everybody's sake. We all want to protect the mountainside. And people do what we just exist, what we saw today. They went in and topped those trees before they came before us.
Right.
If you read the law, the scenic overlay law, it says before any real anything more than four foot or six foot, I think it is, is put in, it has to come before the planning board before you do anything on that lot. It has to come before the planning board. If you read it, it says that. So what people are doing is doing what they want to do first and then come before the planning board. How what do you do about it?
Right.
You know, that's what we're facing with the one tonight.
Right. And I know Connor on the zoning revision committee has talked about, you know, can we get at the start of the process? Can we get his like zone photos? But they're cutting even before the start of the process.
Right.
And 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 you're right. And then it's a valid question. You're the planning board. You're not enforcement. It should have been enforced before the project starts. And maybe, I don't know, but this isn't the place to brainstorm the answers. I know we got to have a separate meeting for that. But but it does seem that the building department, you know, maybe when you get a piece and you know, these things have happened, maybe a question to the building department, say, hey, what have you done to call these people to task? Because you know, because they are enforcement. And when you get a project, you know, maybe part of our answer is you pass it back to them and say, fix the problem first before you give us this. I don't know if you're allowed to do that, but 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 yeah, somewhere there's things are dropped falling through the cracks and people are getting away with murder and.
We do consult the bill, Laura, just so you know, we we consult the building department a lot, like right, Peter, like
Oh, yeah.
back and forth and ask questions and then come back. We we do utilize them a lot and we did on this case.
But you know, a lot of times the only reason something gets caught is because a neighbor, like in this case, complains about something.
Until I put in an application for a building permit.
Right.
You know, the railtors don't tell the buyers that there are limits.
They sure don't.
And until the building department has got an application in front of them, they don't know either.
No, but what people are doing is buying lots in the scenic overlay to build houses with a great view. And that's what they're doing. And then they come before us like today and we go, oh, no, can't do that. I don't really, I'm not coming up with an answer, but I think we should have a meeting as soon as possible to try to discuss these things. You know, the assessor's office has an interesting tool. I used to use it a while ago. It's almost Judy would love it. It's almost like orthophobe photography, but the county actually flies all the land continuously. And assessors can tell you if you put a shed on your house, they can tell you that you put an addition on you from the air from.
I want access to that because I'm using twenty sixteen photographs at the moment.
It's the county has it. I used to have the the hard drive for it. You can look. It's unbelievable. If you think Google Earth or or.
Google Earth is not up to date.
No, this what the county has, you can, I swear, you can look at in the barbecue pit and see what they're cooking. It's amazing.
Can you send me a link or, you know, where to find this stuff? Because I don't know.
Yeah. But anyway.
I have an idea. I know December thirtieth is kind of off. What if we set aside a planning board regular meeting to meet with everyone?
Yeah, John's got his hand up. One second. John?
Oh, yes, Peter. Laura, your interest is certainly well founded when it comes to the scenic overlay. The scenic overlay has been a major issue for many years. And this was one of my concerns when I saw our legal budget gutted. So we are, as Peter said, going to have major problems when it comes to scenic overlay.
Right.
There has to be a system, whether it is notification at the point that they put a bid in on a property, that it's in the scenic overlay or not. But early enough so that no one can say, we didn't know.
Sure.
And then sue us.
Right. Yeah.
Stuart had his hand up.
You sound off. You sound off.
Stuart.
You're muted, Stuart.
You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, okay. How would the town board consider passing a law requiring all brokers doing business in the town to make a disclosure? Okay, okay. How would the town board consider passing a law requiring all brokers doing business in the town to make a disclosure of of parcels that are in the scenic overlay? And what the restrictions are, like hand out, you know, a notification? And require them under penalty of some kind of, you know, fine or something if they don't?
Well, I I I guess, I I don't know, maybe. My 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 thought about implementation of that is how do you know, you know, you got a broker and saw what he's all of a sudden has a client to say, oh, let me show you this thing in Woodstock. I don't know how you make all the brokers aware that it's in the scenic overlay. You'd have to educate. It would seem to me it would be impossible to make that happen in terms of making sure every note, every broker knew, just like you can't make every homeowner know. How do you make sure every broker knows?
But Laura, you have the MLS system.
Right, multiple listing.
Association, you have multiple listing. You have an organization in Ulster County that has every broker as a member of it.
Yep, right, okay.
So there is a mechanism.
Okay, cool.
That's what computers were invented for.
Yeah. Well, and that's why we need this brainstorming session because you're bringing forth great ideas. So anyway, back to, so Peter, I'm happy to join you. I I'm honestly not going to join you on my birthday. But besides the fact that it's between Christmas and New Year's and I always do family things and I'm usually out of town. So.
What I'm suggesting is to move that meeting.
Yeah, I I but I would come any Thursday. So if I think somebody said you could take a regular meeting, but I know your regular meetings tend to be booked. I would come a Thursday that's not a regular, I've got my calendar here. You pick a date, I can make it. But maybe you do a Thursday that's not your regular meeting, maybe a second or a fourth. Really not Thanksgiving. But in any event, a second or a fourth, and I will definitely be there because I would love to do this. I know Connor has been a great representative from the planning board on the zoning revision committee. And, you know, Connor's very, you know, he's been helping us think through some scenic overlay things. So let's go for it. Scenic overlay is a hot topic. I'm I'm all in. I'll be there. Just we'll pick a date that's free on my calendar. I will be there.
So Melissa, what I'm suggesting to the board is to cancel our workshop on the 30th of December.
Okay.
And re-sign it to an earlier date.
Okay.
For just this case. If everybody on the board has agreed with that.
Just what case, Peter? You said just this case?
Scenic overlay, address the scenic.
That's this issue.
That's a topic, not a case.
Yeah. And to invite the tree committee, invite the W E C. You know, everybody.
I'm I'm looking at the schedule. Hang on.
Let me point out that the W E C is going to come on the 21st.
Okay.
Or at least, no, I'm sorry, the C E A group is going to come on the 21st. Some of them are a W E C member.
That's right, but that's a C E A conversation. This is scenic.
Correct. Okay, correct.
All right. So we have, we have a regular meeting on the 16th. What if we dedicate that meeting to this? Like, it's far enough in advance. I am good with my managerial skills in our office. Do we want to take December 16th and do this? Planning board.
That's good. That'll be your last meeting then of the year. Are you going to want to have your last meeting of the year via topic and not cases?
Do it.
It's up to you.
We could do half and half.
Well, I think this, if we do a deep dive on scenic overlay, I I mean, I'd love to be able to just deep dive it and not have to cut off because there's another topic. Just saying. But if that's what you want to do on the 16th, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm in. If that's what you choose to do, that's fine.
It's very, very important. So we should do it as soon as we can. And.
All right. So are you guys.
Like I said.
What I, what I got from you was let's cancel the December 30th just because it's prior. Okay. And do December 16th. I mean, I I'm good with that. I can make it work.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
If you guys are good with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay, December 6, 6:30?
Yep.
I'm adding to my calendar as we speak.
Yep.
And I'm excited about the discussion because, you know, we need to be proactive and preventive and figure out, you know, we have a scenic overlay law, but things are just falling through the cracks. And it would be wonderful to figure out how to close up those gaps.
Okay, good, good.
Got it.
Anybody else have any questions or issues before we go for adjournment?
Yes, we have other stuff to do.
Are are you okay if I drop off? I think I think I'm.
I am. That is good.
Excellent. Thank you, guys, for all you do and and we'll be talking. So thank you. Thank you much. Bye.
Thank you, Laura. We have to approve the resolution for Rowley for the barn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that one. Okay.
That's okay.
But wait a minute. Oh, I I was looking at Swans. I said, well, we're not doing that. I didn't see Rowley's. Okay.
Which we just, we'll talk about that in a second, but the Rowley barn.
Okay, so Stuart, you be so kind as to.
That's what we.
Rowley done?
We, well, we approved it. We proved the application subject to a resolution. Now you're saying we need to make a motion to approve the resolution itself?
Yes, please.
Which has been drawn and reviewed. All right, so on case number S U P 210461A, Richard and Jacqueline Rowley. I moved that the planning board approve the resolution in this matter as drafted.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. What are we doing with the Diswan Aaron's case? What am I doing?
Well, it's been, it's been, the open, the public hearing has been recessed, subject to call the chair.
And we need to.
Do I put on the agenda next meeting for us to have a conversation on how we're going to proceed? And invite the applicant?
Yeah, if we open the public meeting, we got to have everybody there.
So I'm asking you, what do you want me to do?
Are we reopening it? Or are we asking them to do their homework and decide what they want to do?
Well, let's back up for a second. Mike, Michael of the tree committee wanted to go out there and look. And he was asking for our help to get him in there. But I don't know that we have that authority. That's if he can get the consent of the owner to go there, then to the next meeting.
He called me. We have several times asked the tree committee to go on site visits. We did not for this one. We talked to the Z E O. Peter went up, somebody else went up with Peter. So I I asked.
I went up with Peter.
Yes.
But you know, I reread.
I asked supervisor, hang on, Peter, sorry. I asked Supervisor McKenna to give Mr. Veach a call and just tell him that there's protocol for this. And the planning board didn't ask the tree committee to go for this site.
What can we ask?
I mean, I reread what the tree committee's job is, and it's to
Got this.
Deal with trees in the town near the highway or in highways 20 feet from the highway. But they can't go on private, people's private property and tell them what to do. I mean, that's that's not acceptable.
No, I I'd like to reflect for a moment. I know the hour is getting a little late, but when Peter and I were up there at the parcel, it was clear that the house was pushed away from the ledge quite a bit. And and I don't know how much farther closer to the, you know, the away from the view it could be done in. And also, the existing screening at the property is substantial. So I, you know.
What about Laura's idea of of requiring them to plant trees?
Where, though?
Well. Into the side. I'd love to go. Can I still go? I'd love to go look at it.
It's the only issue, there's a couple of issues with that. Number one, is is as Stuart just said, the screening, the trees that are in front block, block the property. So planting more trees really wouldn't make any difference. But here's the issue. If you tell a client to plant 100 trees, who's going to check that they're grown, that they're deer didn't eat them, that they didn't, who's going to check it?
My great grandchildren, it'll be 20 years from now, they'll take a look. I mean, hell, it takes a long time for them to grow, right?
Right. I I I don't know.
I just don't know how I'm even going to vote on this right now because I'm I'm kind of not wanting to approve anything for that. So.
Let let me ask, let me ask a question, Peter. Why are the photographs that Brad provided so different from the photographs that come from the complainers?
Me, Mr. Monserad, it's still on the call. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean, I'm not meaning to be offensive.
Right.
It seems to me that that we can see that scar. And yet the images we got from the applicant don't show the scar.
Just a different angle. I mean, clearly, the the topping is was visible. And clearly, it wasn't the right thing to do. But anyway, James saw the the other property I'm talking about, the one at the end of of Day Road. He went up there. And, right, James, you you saw that. That's wide up, the whole cliff is wide open, wide.
You can't build anything there, no.
And so the guy, the guy spending millions of dollars for that lot. And we're going to tell them, no.
So did the bill, was there a violation issue for those properties where they took out all the trees? Or is it just sitting there with no violation on it?
No violation. And as James saw, I mean, I'm talking clear cutting underneath the ledge so that they could have the greatest view. They cut, it's like a field. They cut everything.
You can actually see this, you could see the sign for my store from there if you used, you know, good glasses.
When was it cut?
When?
When?
I don't know. It just, it was just completely clear and open. It looked like there was like a, I'm remembering it now. I have, I took pictures. But there's was like a found old foundation of, I guess, what was used to be there.
Yeah.
And there seemed to be like three different areas they could build, but none of them would be like.
None of them would be out of the view. No.
James, I thought you were going to say you could see Russia from my house.
See Russia from there, too.
I I have an idea. Let's just, I know it's been a long night. For the Diswans Aaron's case, how about you guys, the planning board, sleep on it? What I'm going to do is we'll have a conversation next meeting, how we're going to proceed.
Well, I I want to make another point.
Is that okay, Peter? Does that sound reasonable?
It's good, yeah.
I want to make another point that, you know, emails that came in yesterday and today, it I reacted to it that there was like disinformation coming in because there were communications indicating that there are violations that need to be remediated. But there haven't been any violations issued. So there are no violations. People are complaining about conditions at the property. But until there's a violation issued by the building department and zoning enforcement officer, and then they they would have to refer to us for remediation. So, you know, to me, it's like putting the cart before the horse. Unless, until there's a violation, what are we to do? And so now we're being asked to opine and make an ultimate decision on what's being proposed on the theory that it violates the standards of the of the scenic overlay, but nobody's issued a violation saying that it violates the code. So, you know.
I thought I understood that Ellen had gone out there and say that, said that it didn't. I'm in misunderstanding?
Said there's no clear cutting and she's been there, or her office has been there at least twice. So, you know, I I understand there are different opinions about it, including Mr. Monserad, including Laura Ricky, who testified at length tonight. You know, and I don't know what everybody's view is on the board a bit. I think we're going to need to discuss it. But it just bothers me that people are banding about, there's a violation, these are violations, when when the one office that's empowered to issue a violation and send a signal that the standards are going to be tightly applied, hasn't issued a violation. So, you know.
I'm gonna, I'll put it on unfinished business for the next agenda and we can further discuss.
If I can plant an idea for a second. The question about the the other two properties that had old houses on them and appear to have been clear cut at some point. We don't know if they were clear cut before the law was put in place.
No, it doesn't matter. What matters is that the the house would be visible now.
Yeah, I know. I know. But my question, and I just want to plant this for our future conversation, is does that mean that if something was clear cut before the law and therefore it's impossible to build without it being visible? Does that mean that that land is no longer a building lot? Or is there a way that building could be done that would in some way remediate the situation? Yeah, it's not a scar only because the trees are growing up in front of it and a house would show. I don't know. But it seems to me that we've, we've got a blunt instrument here and we need to get a little more refined. And particularly when it comes to properties that used to have a house on them. And the damage may have been done before the zoning law was put, the overlay was put in. What do we do now? If somebody buys that property, it seems that a couple of these that you're talking about, Peter, are in that category.
Yeah. Yeah.
To say that it can never be used until 100 years have gone by and the trees have grown up again seems a little bit crazy.
The owner's going to come in and say it's a taking because you're depriving them of the use of their property, you know, so.
So I just wanted to plant the possibility that there's some other solution that we need to consider that would allow people who buy that kind of property to to build on it.
Well, the one on the, the one on the end of Ray Cliff Road, there's no choice because the the whole property is cleared on a cliff. The one up on Day Road, there's more land in the back where you could build. You wouldn't see it, but they didn't buy that million dollar piece of property to put their house in the back.
Or no less drive that driveway every day.
That driver's terrifying.
Horrifying. I don't, I I can't even imagine who wants to live up there. I'm just like, my God, they must have a driver. Just wait.
Helicopter.
Oh, hell, you're right. You're right.
Because the law says if it's a lot of record, we have to, you know, let them build. But there's lots, as John knows, on the top of California Corey Road. They created lots of dirt that a billy goat can't get to. You just can't get to it. You're.
But that solves our problem. The problem is with ones that you can get to.
Right, right. All right, well, I'm going with Melissa's call there. So she's gonna.
Just want to plant an idea so that we can think about.
I appreciate that. We're grappling with some difficult issues on one, one application scale and on a global scale. And so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's challenging.
When, when and if we get a C E A, that's going to come up that way.
Yeah.
Definitely.
All right, everybody.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Okay, all in favor?
Got it.
Hi.
And Melissa, are you going to be in the office tomorrow?
I can be just for you.
I have tomorrow, well, I have tomorrow off. So if you need something signed, I could do it.
I would love that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably be in it about eight o'clock. I don't, if you're off, I'm sure you don't want to be up and out at eight o'clock, but.
By the way, does the name Van de Bogart mean anything to you, history buffs?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just asking.
I live around the corner from that street.
Apparently, there was a Dutch explorer by that name years ago. So I read.
You're an old Woodstock family. They used to be, the the old guy that has the place on the top used to be a forest ranger in the, in the fire tower at the top of the mountain.
Oh, wow.
They're an old, old town group. Okay.
If I can just say, I did not mean to offend anybody. I didn't remember names. But it's good that you're raising issues that need to be raised.
Peter, what time's good for you?
Take a break.
It doesn't matter, Melissa. You can text me when you're there and I'll come down.
Okay, I'll be here. I'll be here between eight and eight thirty in the morning and I'll stay, and I'll stay till I see you.
Give me a text when you're ready.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good one, everybody.
Good night, John.
Good night, Melissa.
Good night. Take care, guys.
Good night.